Is that often sports car?
Yeah.
Hi.
Okay, we'll call the uh, I think the information board.
Uh, I just wanted to report that, uh, I just made the comprehensive plan and what's important, none of the wording has changed, we haven't proclaimed any of that. I just made it look nicer, it's not a hundred twenty pages long now, like three. And then, you guys took a look at the zoning administration manual, um, that's just something that you're kind of invited, that maybe I can implement in years, I kind of use it now, all that, so. Um, we do need to maybe schedule a meeting uh, with him to continue our work on the zoning, that's just kind of bringing that up so that we don't forget that we're wanting to work on that. Okay? Um, yes, with the proof to flat.
Do you, do you like the way, do you like the way that's set up, yourself, for your needs?
Yes, I do. It works well, um, in the conversations like we've been having all, um, there is like a variance application, uh, application for wind energy. I like those, because right now, we have a conventional use permit and a building permit, something, you know, kind of specified, it's like, there's even one for our wireless communication power, but we have those, we just use a building permit for that. Should we just be an institution? And have a couple of applications. Any other questions?
I don't know that. I don't.
Okay. Now, just the flat.
Do you want to see it?
Is there anything unusual?
No, uh, will outlast their supply and outs, that will be rich, uh, for, that's going to handle the solder for future uses to the planet. B-boers, Cooper is purchasing, I think, uh, Strasser, that's what he's providing out that. Same box of providing out there is to fill their complete. Um, standing, they weren't from that one.
That's okay, that's working.
Okay, and then sports edition, um, that was from Jim, and he bought them out to spell.
Jeff and Laura Schwartz, our living in the valley, house where, uh, our son lived, and his wife listed at the trailer house when we were back, working for three years. And, um, we had to, previously when we started that discussion, to find that I planted, there's someone home and stuff, sold the house and gone to make the clothes on three days.
Does the B-bo addition just, uh, Strasser complete?
It is actually a hundred fifty-four acres, I believe, it's, it's all the, like, the, the north, I don't know how many feet it is.
Hundred forty-one, is it?
But, yeah, it's like a hundred, some odd acres. It's one. So she's getting like, uh, yeah, a hundred forty-one, like forty-one acres. But, and it will look like all of those things down. A little bit left there, and stuff, we need to have.
So we need a recommendation from the zoning board later, just, we need to make a recommendation now.
Sure. Well, I think you have to, I think you have to take the band orders, whatever. So is there a concern, if we pass that on, uh, can we do it like as a approval to their?
I don't think we, based on the condition?
I don't think we said, like, seriously.
I just don't think we should have start that, is my opinion.
Yeah.
What's the town?
There's no urgency there, like, you know.
No, because they signed it clear back in March, so, their own urgency, it should have been one of them.
Right.
I agree.
So is it okay to strike that then, from the list?
Yes.
Okay. And then by default, I'll add it to next month, for the next meeting, whichever.
So here are no concerns? You want a motion, uh, we can just motion all of them, we do them all individually later.
And they all have, uh, access.
Yep, they all have access, like.
For more, yeah. Motion second to the discussion.
I'm gonna, I'm staying until the effects of mine.
All of the favor, I, uh, for same time, motion please.
Any questions on the building permit? With one of those, we did get that, uh, the dirtwork letter, that about the tax shift. Am I right, Chris?
Yeah, I'm very.
Yeah.
Very, is that on the, correct?
Yeah, we have a letter from them, so. The rest of it, um, any questions, we have a direct link to the P C, but. Okay, so that location, the location has not changed. I mapped that out after that last meeting, and the location, like, even of those, turbines, they're like, the dots are like, on the map, so, just, if you guys want to look at that, I just have it on my, my. Um, I think the rest of it is kind of informative.
We did get the survey for the road hall agreement, and we got a thumb grab of the, uh, visual depictions of the road, so we have, uh.
I just wanted to make sure that this, right now, our, our locations on the road hall, based on the original, not this, like, location.
Okay, any other, uh, they would, pipeline? I believe the Trevor's here to talk about the pipeline, as far as the public commentary goes.
Um, okay, can I just say one more, because I'm, I'm not connected to the company, but.
Which one?
I just wanted to, um, the, the Department of Revenue has requested our G I F file for their new first term. And I just wanted you guys to be aware that we will be applying that to them, if you guys have concerns. It's going to be used for, basically my purposes, when I log in, I'll have a map there that shows the sale, and then also, maybe some areas that may require some re-approval, reassessment, because the sale ratio is too high to vote. So, I feel like it's going to be more for me.
Right, thank you.
Good, good, okay, yeah, so, just, why I have that, okay?
Well, good. Thank you. Yeah, I guess we'll, is there any more, we'll get to the public part, I guess, is any of, sweetland ratio, I think you can talk about, or it isn't, that's a way to go.
No. Okay. I can tell you, on the, on the sweetland, I did look at the F A A website, and we didn't get any notifications back, so this is all because of my going and looking for it, as opposed to them notifying us, but, at the end of this, it simply says that they, uh, did not find it to be a reasonable or substantial obstruction, air traffic.
All right. See, they've also changed the overall height to four hundred ninety-nine feet, as opposed to five ninety-one. Um, I did call, talk to that Buck Reynolds of the F A A, his number was on one of his documents, and he is one of the, one of the people, the F A A, that helped make these determinations, and I asked him what their, what their borders, other than,
Is there, is there a standard where you get to have them use trench box that really increases the time and expenses of the project? Is that why, is that why you tried to state it that for me if you don't have to look deeper?
That's the requirement of business, so they're the ones that, you know, federal, they, the federal government determines that gap. Now, we're gonna go lower than that and to your trench gap box, he's out. If it, if it was one of the landlord, I would really like one here, I don't think it would be a problem at all. I don't know what the trench box is, but it's not, you know, forty million dollars. And if it is, it's a simple trench and it would, you know, make the landlord feel a little bit safer about the ground where we're at than we do.
The trench box, trench box is only, the trench box is only safety for the workers. When, once you've excavated trench, you drop trench box in some sites.
Oh, I mean, you're heading for it, but I'm sure you're. Yeah, I was heading for it. So, yes, for you. So, you're talking safety to the worker, how does that go along though?
Safety to the pipeline workers when they're landing in, you know, they have a six rating fee. That pretty much is gonna require, I would pretty much require a safety box or trench box.
One thing I do know is obviously the pipeline, we, we venture higher, hopefully contract with it, it works out. Then a lot of the movement pipelines across the country and then to your, you will have a construction manager on site. And so he or she will be with us while we're in the land that we're in here in town. And they'll be right with us, walking the pipeline every single day. So, your comment of, you know, this, this is not safe, your construction manager, your hours, whatever, you haven't observed those things, they can make those comments. And I worked on them before and anybody in the entire crew could shut down the pipeline for that day. You didn't have to be supervisor, you didn't have to be personal CEO, it could be just, again, a quality control guy, the safety officer, whoever could shut it down.
Any other public comment?
We would appreciate timely updates.
You bet. Would you like me to comment or pass on that information regarding those numbers you talked about? Doug or?
Okay, here you go more. Okay, we'll call the board of commissioners. Uh, from the consent agenda.
Um, as far as the consent of agenda goes, there was one addition that was made just in the nick of time, which is that I forgot to add Harlan's local emergency management performance grant. And in essence, that's the same language that we've had each year. So, if he's here, if you have any questions for him, but, uh, pretty much it's just the renewal of that program.
That's just the, we just fill up with quarterly, uh, reports.
The contract gets the money from the state. They pay for half my wages, half my benefits, and insurance. As a yearly deal.
Next, no changes here over here?
No, identical. I'll make that motion, two motions exactly, and send agenda with the, the, this agreement with the state.
Any other discussion about any of that agenda? Terry done all the favor, I, uh, both same time, motion carried. Okay, Sherry couldn't be here, so basically what she's doing is, this is her transitioning out timeline. So, what she'd like to do is receive permission to advertise the position beginning September twenty one. She'll close it on the seventeenth of October, of course, she posts it on the website, and then she'd have interviews that would follow. And then, uh, bring it to you in the November meeting to approve, and then have that employee start in November. So, there will be three of them in the office the last six weeks of the year.
Going to be the hiring person.
Who is?
Yeah.
You guys. Who's gonna pick it?
Well, um, well, you don't make go get it? Well, that's what I mean, that, I, because we've always made it a point that whoever is running that department, it's their hire, they're their hire. I mean, they're the ones who bring it to us to locate, hire the hiring person. But whether that person needs all the criteria or they can work together, that's up to the end of that department.
Hi. So, we're just having a discussion about, uh, position, timelines, hiring, those kind of things. Let me just question, who makes the final decision on that?
Of who are hiring, and then, and then we come to you and tell you who are hiring. And then, we buy that commitment first, as you're closing on the, the party, but it's like.
Seventeenth.
So, we want to give them at least two weeks to, hopefully hire to give them two weeks to, to start job, but perhaps. To start in, by December first, probably they can start. So, then Sherry will be here four months and help me out with the line change.
So, you're looking at a start in December, because here she's going into mid-November, so that would change that particular. Copy. Not exactly. Um, yeah, is that, is that, is that a dollar? Yeah, I'm pretty sure about the December term.
That's what she's told me, and I would show you on the first, it's more than thirty percent.
So, it's either second motion? It would be nice just to select one.
I'll make that motion.
In a second. Any other discussion on that?
We're talking about having three people for just the last month and a half, not into the change.
Right, Sherry, we don't want the business.
And she said, is that her?
Can we have them a bunch of?
Okay, um, this is another discussion, all of the favor, I, I, both same time, motion carried. I get it. I got a text message from our dice dad, I think you're on the eyes, but we'll just stretch this out from here on, so. Kind of change each more time, yeah.
Credit also. You done that from, it's very, TV? Uh, thanks. I need your tires on the Silverado, uh, I got a couple different quotes on cheaper than the two or one sixty-one per tire plus twenty-one a week. Uh, mounting through tonies, um, it also has a CD joint that needs to be replaced. Uh, you're getting into Astralos this week, hopefully it's covered by warranty, if not, and we do have a quote of six hundred and twenty-eight dollars seventy-three cents.
Why would we need to afford that tire on the, the fresh old one?
You don't necessarily, but it's just information.
Of courtesy, courtesy, if we can do that.
Um, Josh is off the schedule now, so I'll be out at the seventeenth. And we are gonna have a school shooting training, it's gonna be a tabletop exercise at the school September seventh, the evening, and I'll be at the school, so. Again, this is just sort of a, a question, um, I'm actually not asking. Get the, the, my better show. He's involved, uh, school, it's gonna be the entire department, emergency man, beer house, the city PD, and, uh, ambulance. Off the ambulance, um, question. This is a first of three exercises that we'll do in the program, uh, first tabletop, you may move on to semi-ride exercise and then full form, full-scale exercise. And that's, it'll be, once a year, right? It's gotta be over a quarter of a year, right? That's it?
Our second half school is the last thing, it's the recent one.
Yeah, they are. I saw this morning, the evolved, they put up this fence, and I'm really happy with the fence that I put up, um. That's not gonna stop the offensive place, so I'm happy to see that. So, uh, that's one thing, if I were doing this exercise, I don't know if I would do it, and you share it, um, it's something I need to keep, uh, fresh on, because, you know, I'm obviously great that I can have it here, but.
Want to be ready, it does, so, uh, shame I had a, a deal, signing the marks here on approved bills. I sent me, when I, when I did sign, we had a discussion about, I signed the mark for twenty-one hundred dollars for t-shirts for that fundraiser. Uh, we had a discussion that I probably should've, and I maybe this would've brought up a long time ago, uh, buying these t-shirts. Yeah, that, that was, it seemed to remember that we had approved that point one hundred dollar purchase.
Okay, no, we probably didn't approve that dollar amount exactly, we didn't. We did approve to start the, to start buying t-shirts and sell t-shirts for the fundraiser.
Uh, so, all those hundred and ten t-shirts aren't sold, or committed to somebody?
Yeah. And we've got, um, we actually have that amount in sponsorship. In sponsorships and t-shirt sales, we have that amount in our revenue account, that's specifically for the painting and stuff, so we have it in a different account. Goes in one, comes out the other.
Um, I was noticing in, uh, there were several lines under budget that are currently over by quite a ways. Already, we still have four months of the year, your, your core budget is still under quite a ways, we've got several line items there. One's over by forty-five hundred, another one by twenty-six hundred, one by fourteen, one by fourteen hundred, one by twenty-one hundred, another one by sixteen hundred, another one over a thousand.
Um, minus three of those are gas bills that really obviously did its hard this year, so, um, I know some of the other line items that, uh, we're doing the budget, uh, started under one line and come out another. Did I put it in wrong line item or whatever, or?
Just, uh, four months, eleven years. I can't speak for this, but it's true, we sell, see that many times.
Like I said, our, our standard budget is, or as a whole, we're still on, we're still in good shape. It's just, I think, some things have been spent out of one line item that weren't originally designated for the hazard, so that was part of it.
Yeah, it looks like we're still under the, under twenty thousand of budget from that.
Yeah, it's sixty-five percent.
Yeah.
So. All right, just line issues, I guess. Thank you. Her, her request for twenty-three, yes, like your, your personnel line is basically the same, or actually, quote, under last year, but you're comfortable now. Okay, personnel, you know. Insurance went down six thousand, I mean, salary top ones, I was basically, I was saying, I just wanted to make sure.
I did those calculations, he was gone to the service at that, so I took his numbers and made sure, like, there was a couple things that weren't here. We always use the numbers from insurance premiums from the past.
And also. I'm glad I own agendas, correct one, or needs to be reclassified?
The one that's in the proposal, I was, I was.
I just wanted.
Yep.
Um, it would be a slight increase, but.
Right, and we didn't. They also were going from a two-year deputy to a non-certified, I mean, starting deputy, which is about four hour an hour, but, so.
Sorry, no, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
So, Josh is done, done?
Josh, thank you.
Thank you. See, Mike made it, are you ready, Mike?
I am, yeah. Sorry for the delay. Trying to do a couple of construction things and, you know, it's still a frequent, uh, incident. Also, can you go on to that? We'll, all right, I'm gonna hand out over here, what we're gonna talk about today, um, is to just talk a little bit about insularity. When it's an insular, the voluntary, right, when we get dental, we have life insurance, and then we have vision insurance for the, for the employees. And what we've done is, I put together some highlight sheet, so these ones are gonna be the ones that we're gonna have zero in on it. And so the, kind of, they're the exact same, I have all the other, or, hold, eliminate, and, and usually. Why don't we start reverse with this sheet right here? And, um, I'm gonna kinda start with, um, talking about what you have right now, because, you know, right now, the county has a dental, with Delta Dental. And you have that for, I believe, thirty-six consecutive years with Delta Dental, so it's been a long, long time relationship with Delta Dental. Delta Dental is the one dental provider in the state that really has an extensive network. Most dentists are in the network, and by going to the network provider, if I go to this, you know, dent techs, if they allow an amount for Delta, let's say they're teaching a hundred and twenty dollars, and this dentist is being charged, maybe a hundred and twenty-five, they have to take it the allowed amount, so they have to agree to those contracts. And, um, really, Delta, from what we see out there, we're in the, of course, we work with hundreds of different companies, and many different dental providers, that are really the one provider that has a network. When I say a network, doesn't just include one here or one there, you know, one where your people are going to take care of. Um, right now, the way your plan works, the left-hand side, you have a twenty-five dollar per year deductible. And this is on a calendar year, by the way, too, so two hundred and one is when these rates kick in. Um, if they go for preventive care, that's a hundred percent covered. Um, fillings, extractions are eighty percent, and then crowns, bridges, and dentures are at fifty percent. And orbitons is covered at fifty percent as well. Um, pretty much every one of these plans will have some kind of maximum, so the third one from the top will show your annual maximum of a thousand bucks. And that's where your plan spends every year, and most dental plans have some kind of maximum. Um, what sometimes gets tricky is those eighty-fifties, they'll, some carriers or some proposals will move things around, and they'll say, well, instead of they put a group channels and being at eighty percent, they might move to a fifty percent. Now, what I've done, and what our office has done, is we've taken all these benefits and have compared them to absolute life to life. So, on the right-hand side, we're gonna see there's a standard proposal to the standard life insurance company. Everything there is gonna be most similar to what you guys have right now for your employees. So, I've looked through all of their, the fillings, the extractions, to make sure they're as good or better. Um, now, with their network, you'll see it called the emeritus network. Their network, um, when I looked at it, Doug and I spent a lot of time kind of reviewing this stuff, they're in, in Miller, which is not really any dentists on, they have to drive the, rooms at Westing Springs for dentists. So, what they would do is, they would, you'd be okay, their members would be okay, but what they're gonna pay is, they're gonna pay what's called usual customer rate in the zip code. So, if I go to the dentist here in Miller or neighboring community, and they're not in the network, the third thing is they're gonna pay with normal form, what most dentists pay at ninety percent of what normal dentists pay. So, if you have a hundred dentists, in theory, allowing ninety bucks more are lower, same or lower, then it's gonna be covered. My experience is that you're still gonna sometimes run into people that aren't in the network, or that, I mean, that charge more. What they will do is, they will write it off, as long as it's within ten bucks of the usual customer rate, the standard will write it off, and they aren't gonna charge, they're gonna come back to you with some dental spilling, because, uh, maybe they just, very, they use, as an example, if you went in and, and you allowed them on to a hundred and twenty for the ninety percentile, and your dentist charged a hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents, the dental office could come back and you say, five dollars and fifty cents, you're going for this. You know, kind of knowing that you're a member, right? But, for a larger proposal with the standard, is they would, they would weigh that. Um, with Delta Dental, uh, our current adjustment, I believe, is a five percent, so we put in here what the current rates are, and then what the new rates that has a one, one of twenty, twenty-three are gonna be. So, if these rates don't change, unlike the health, it changes every September, because if I can't, you're gonna change. So, when we went over to the standard, so their rates are thirty-three, twenty, and then, of course, they have the sixty-two, ninety-two, ninety, or forty-two, they, they will save you how many money if you go there. Um, my only hesitation with them is that you've had thirty-six consecutive years with Delta Dental, and they're a really, really good company. Um, they have a utilization thing where the longer you're there, it's kind of the left-hand side, the more years you're there, they cap what they're gonna charge you for a renewal. So, like, you guys are, because you've been there for twenty-six plus years, um, they can never charge you more than five percent for your dental rates, you know, on a, on a annual basis. Now, when you look at the numbers here, they're about four bucks a month less expensive on the single, the standard is. And if they're a family, they're gonna save a little bit more. I've also secured a two-year rate guarantee, which is really nice, as long as you think about it for two years. So, you might take the savings, um, and I, Doug and I talked at length about this on different occasions, you know, and I said, I just wanna make sure, I, I've said, worked with you and the county and company employees for twenty-plus years, and we currently have a Delta Dental for the county, um, but I just wanna make sure there's no surprise. And I think overall, he said, I feel comfortable on what we have, I feel comfortable that it's a good option for you, like you said, my reservation, the network isn't twice the same, but it will be protected, it'll answer within ten bucks, which I think in most cases they're holding. And, and all the eighty-fifties, and, you know, their percentages are gonna be kind of the same as well, so, o- overall, I feel pretty good about that. What I do like is you could get it all under one, combined them all, because, right now, you've got Deltos Dental does the dental, you have VSP who does a separate billing for vision insurance, and then they have companion life for the life insurance. What we're showing today was, we're gonna do it all under the standard, if you wanted to do that, and we'll kind of show you where the money will be at and hand that. So, that's under the dental, let's, um, go down to the vision now, the vision is the next one down, like you said, we have other, like, yeah.
What, pick one on the note? Dental, I guess, that thousand dollar max?
Yep.
Um. I don't, you probably didn't prepare it though, with your ask, but, is that, what if it's fifteen hundred, or if you do like that, is a thousand or more, you know, like?
Yeah, a lot of times it probably covers both, but maybe not with this.
Too much we get, five thousand dollar job, so I called him, and I asked him, can I have two, three policies? Maybe some, I don't know, if you use, or if you're, for us, if you want. The question is, are we participating as a county?
Uh, you can only have, well, for our group side, we can only have one group plan, so if the county only has one dental plan on the middle right now, and I think what you're asking, Greg, is, you know, could be raised to that thousand or higher amount? If it did raise that thousand up, um, now, you may be good, Jim, I don't know, maybe they did buy a separate dental plan to go with the county's plan, but the county can only have one dental plan in place, because they have to kind of coordinate that.
Okay, so it is a group plan?
Mm-hmm.
It is, like, but just being, as an individual, not your plan. The health plan?
No. The county, each employee that takes it as a, you know, a member, so, I think, pretty much all the same, we're on, aren't they, Doug? Pretty much, pretty much everybody's on, they could add their own, of course, but it's per being a member, the maximum now. What they go, what doesn't count towards that thousand bucks is the preventive care, that's one specific thing we kept out, because currently, Delta does not count that. So, if you go in twice, you get, you know, get, you know, x-ray once a year, two cleans, two checkups, that does not count towards a thousand. We made sure on our proposal that we didn't, because those are little things, on some proposals, well, they all count towards a thousand. Now, we probably could raise it to fif, uh, twelve hundred to fifteen hundred, or even fifteen hundred, we really could never go above fifteen hundred, to be about the highest we've ever seen. The rates may go up a little bit, I'd have to see what happened to it, um, from that end, and.
Does that, most, most people still, my wife is.
Almost over there, two hundred, or a thousand, I think the highest that sees fifteen hundred. Uh, but you're right, I mean, those are, um, at some point inflationary, they're gonna have to probably raise it, and go a little bit higher level. But we can check on it and see what it'll do with the numbers, you know, just to say, hey, we bump that up to fifteen hundred. A lot of times, if they wanna do, play games with me and say, all right, we'll move that to fifteen hundred, then you gotta take the preventative, shove that into the fifty, into that, and, uh. Yeah, now, yeah, exactly, now you're getting, you're getting beat up on that side, but, we can look at it, but, yeah, that was very, very common, it's, but, mul, a lot of, right now. Let's go to the vision, we can come back to some of this stuff for the vision, um, this is VSP currently, right now, the county has a, um, has, does that directly through VSP. And, um, we've looked at that contract really, really closely, it was, there's a lot of, we've had to take my lead on that interview, to get to it. But, uh, there's different things, right now, they get a ten dollar exam every year, the lenses are every twelve months, so I can't get lenses twice, you know, twice a year, only get once. They have currently a hundred and fifty dollar allowance for frames, and then the lens enhancements are some of these other things, and these are the one things that we're, we are not able to get an exact replica of your current policy with the one we're showing on the right-hand side. But they have, every twelve months, you can get progressive lenses, and they can take later, you can kind of read some of the things there. Um, and then in lieu of glasses, they get contacts every twelve months, so they get a hundred and fifty, so you get, you add glasses or contacts, like, I had my glasses for two years now, and if you're five one year, that I can get new one if I want them. Anything above, we allow a bump, and the member pays, so they're, they're paying for it. And then the exam, contact lens stands up to sixty bucks of coverage. Um, on the right-hand side, if, what the proposal would be, with the bundle resolved together, it'd still be using the VSP network. So, the standard life insurance company will use the VSP network, so there won't be any network changes. The same lenses, the, again, like I was saying, the frames, the only thing that's gonna be a little bit different there are those, uh, what's gonna happen with the lenses inside there. And you'll see some of those, they're gonna ask the member to pay for some money there, and we worked hard to try to say, is there any way to get it, so it's the same. Um, and they just said, no, when they do a group, like, the county, when they're, you know, roughly, you have quite fifty people, and thirty or forty people in the plan, they just, they can't include those in there. When you'll see the bottom, there are the massive savings for premium. I mean, we're talking twenty-six bucks, eight bucks. Um, when I first saw that, my first instinct is, wait a second, what are we missing? And, um, that's why I went back to Doug and I, and he, Doug, deep into the contract, and what we came up with was these things here, it's these lenses that are, because they covered them under the one, they're putting them kind of separately, there's a little bit over the mark. You would save a lot of money if you made a change, you can see, you can say, three times, one, say, if you make that change over to, or to standard. I'm always reluctant, because I don't wanna have a surprise to anybody, you know, and, and also, you know, and that's why we tried to, they, they do a knee check, sure, we look back for, what we're referring to, but, that'd be the one difference. Now, I think these enhancements, the veteran, like Doug, have been in place for a couple of years.
Just two.
Just two years, so it's not like anything going on for thirty-six years. Um, but, that one, they would save a lot of money, I think that the county would save money if you made that change, but it's the closest to what we could get to what we currently have right now. Um, what is the significant separation? Discussion, your ten dollars every twelve months for annual eye, eye exam, what is that? I think what they're referring to is, if you go into the eye doctor, they normally charge you up to eighty bucks, ninety bucks, but they're ten bucks.
They copay.
They copay.
And not a copay.
Exactly, it's copay. Uh, you pay ten bucks to go in, you get the exam, you go cover the rest of it. So, that's all that, what we can set up, and, you know, we work with other vision carriers, we come to hold on. So that's all that, what we can set up, and, you know, we work with other vision carriers, we come people off the leg, you know, with IMID, and the other ones out there, but we just, this is the closest we can get to what you have, and you can save some, combine some of the stuff. Now, the third thing I want to bring to your attention is, if you flip over to the second page here, there's a, you can say, there should be a, you know, in there, it should be a white sheet, that's over there, it's right here. And, and, yeah, there's a lot of things already, so I did. What I've done on here is we annualized the rates, where the rates would be, and I put the total premium, now, the county does not pay the total premium, it was a share, half share.
Fifty, fifty.
Fifty, fifty, so half the same. Half the same, the county, half the same as the members, and you can see the Deltas fifteen fifty-seven right now. We, these are based on the assumption of sixteen singles, six, two parties, which would be husband, wife, or employee and child, and viable, born families. And then, of course, premiums, we're on roughly five percent.
The, the assumption comes from, that is where we're at now.
Yeah, yeah, we used it on the billing statement, is what we did, just kind of seeing where people are now, of course, you have the two hires and stuff, that could change a little bit. And then, you can see where Delta is, or for the, where the, where the standard would be, is instead of fifteen hundred and thirty-seven, or fourteen hundred and all of them, so a little over a hundred dollars there. And then, of course, the vision would be even more savings. Then what we did is we did a third thing, is we put the life insurance, right now, you're being billed separately, and companion life insurance. And that currently, you're paying four dollars and eighteen cents a thousand, or, for, for employee, for fifteen thousand life insurance. The standard, they like, they want to do the whole works, if you're going to do it, and I think from a bringing it together, that makes sense, you know? And what it would be is, if they get fifteen thousand, in what we see, that's the one we're not able to save you money on. That would go from four nineteen, employee, to six twenty-seven, so it's up about two bucks in employee. If you went to twenty-five thousand, and you'll notice in the middle that they have a price per thousand, is kind of how it is, so it gets a little less expensive the more you buy. You could do it for nine dollars and twenty cents, you could give everybody twenty-five thousand, and that was one of the things, you know, I'm thinking of what you're talking about, you know, the dental, a lot of money. You've been at fifteen thousand for a number of years, you know, costs have gone up, people have gone up, it would be, a way that you, you'd cost the county about nine bucks, or about five bucks more a month, from where you're at now, but you could take the fifteen to twenty-five thousand life insurance, and that's double, you have the absolute value, so the maximum value, right now, they pay thirty, they pay fifteen to twenty-five. But what we do, we all in, if you went to the standard for dental, then to the standard for vision, then to the life insurance, you can stay where you're at, you're definitely going to save money. And we can lock it in for a two-year rate guarantee, so.
But they don't want us to let you do all three?
They like to do all three.
Yep.
That's what they're saying, do all three.
And you're not even an option to do this, dental or vision?
Not, not what they're saying, and I could go back to what you said, the county, you came back and you said, Mike, we'll do vision and dental, and it would've been on, right, and do the life, and we're saying, do the same, well, then I'd, I'd say, here's where we're at, and then they have to, but, they, they told me when they reviewed it that, they wanted to do all three of under this current rate start, but they knew they were lower on these two, and the life is, they have that with the spot, they do it, so it's nice. Obviously, you're clearly a great companion, and companion works fine, it's just another filling, this would bring you all together up along. The other really important thing we did, this is a detail that some people might overlook, is Cobra, you know, someone who needs like health, we have to offer Cobra, where they can continue the insurance, and you really need to do that with dental and vision. So we made sure that it's built in your plan, or that Cobra would be included by the standard. So Doug's office, and still let them know if you work with us, but they would be the one in charge of making sure that if someone's no longer here, that they can offer them, you know, their Cobra rights for eighteen months, because the county does not want to do it. You know, these rates would actually be lower if you didn't put the Cobra. But I'm like, you need to have Cobra.
That's Cobra's for eighteen months?
Eighteen months, yeah, every month's one, you go thirty-six, I get it, the dependent, child, or a spouse, or something, that you can want to do, that what it is. I'm not sure if there's anybody on it right now, but we just.
But you're saying it would be seamless for the employee, because they would have the chance, and you just pay for it?
Yep, and it is an extra cost, yeah, isn't it, like, because sometimes, if we didn't have Cobra, your deep rates would be a little bit lower. But all of a sudden, now it's like, all right, Doug can be like, what do we do, I mean, we can work, but we're not Cobra. Attorneys, you know, are experts on that stuff, there's specific things you gotta send out, and we had them build in, so that Cobra included with the dental and vision, to make sure that, because right now, that's what they have, I mean, Delta will offer Cobra, you want to make sure, you're comparing apples to apples. So we made sure we included it, we had one, take a shortcut, try to say, well, let's show you really both premiums, and then we'll be off Cobra, and then move around some other things, you want to make, making sure that everything's included, we did all three, we did the standard, including twelve to twenty-five K, and, and sure, it's, it's still, we're going to save this. Yes, absolutely, yeah, I mean, the, you know, the health, or the vision is saving, I mean, whatever that amounts, eighteen bucks, or whatever amount, I mean, it's math, my hair, a month, a loan, a single, you spend five more on, on the, on the life, and you get more of the benefit, and you save money on the vision, on the dental, and you have a tier, that part I like. That's really nice.
Two years. I have a question, now, so will the standard be the final stop for all customer service? Or you can call the standard, the standard says what you call, uh, VSP now, you call this one, you call that one. Will we have one final stop, without getting passed down the line, the customer service question?
Yeah, so our understanding will, we have other companies with the standards too, so you might, you get experience on the dental that works well. It'd be their part, they're using, the vision, they're using VSP's network on the dental, let's just for sake of, because there's not many dentists in it, let's just say, they don't have a network, but they, they're going to be, who's going to trust you, but it'll all be there. For enrollment, what we're not a hundred percent sure on, at this point, we might have a two-step process, would that be more for the auditor's office and Doug's office? The life, I think, has its own, within the dental vision, one, but, from a member's standpoint, they can take their, should they be able to take their card, and they can call that customer service, and maybe be able to, be able to handle multiple of the benefits. And that's it, that's an advantage with it, you know, right now, you've got a vision card, you've got a Delta dental card, and you have the other one, and you have really good coverage though. So I mean, you know, one thing I'm not here saying is bad, because like you said, we're the advisor on the, on the dental, and we, we have Deltas by far, I guess, carrier, but we have our peers, and so. Are we going to have other, but, I think.
Say it again, please?
Will there be other proposals that you would consider?
Yeah, risky benefits is only a minute to live.
But not today?
Yesterday.
Oh, okay.
But if we have employee meeting on the GFT, that on life insurance fees?
No, let's call it, go home, conversation that happens, people.
I have several questions on there. So, standard has been coming forward, you know, for two, T?
Yep.
Does that mean that the twenty, you're a two-year, isn't it?
Yeah, it means they won't change the rate for two years.
No, but it means that it's two years minimum, we're excited in contract, for them for two years, or is it a year renewal?
Um, no, I mean, technically, don't pay your bill, it's a month-to-month bill, so I mean, you know, if you're, if you went to it, and then, two months, and now you said, county doesn't want it, and send it cancellation, what do you get out of it? What they're saying is they can't change the rate or benefits for two years. And that's, in my world, that's, I like that, because you know what, we don't, we don't, like, you just think it doesn't do renewal every year, cause you're, I like that, and that's one reason we went for it, is like, let's make sure to get something that county doesn't have to, you don't have to worry about a few years, we can get it now, so.
But after twenty-two months, they'll probably have like Delta dental, those fire, they'll want to go up some more?
Yeah, no, they won't, and, you know, my guess is, I guess, if we're dealing with, we need a percentage, we're going to, you know, some kind of difference, a little bit, hopefully, we want, unless inflation slows down, but, at that moment, we can look at it, and maybe if you said, well, what if that moment, we're back to Delta, we could, but now, like, we're in six years of, of continuous history with them. But, you know, we can, we have other carriers, but all, I think, that I, I feel good about them, and, you know, I think you're, I know you're employable, no matter what the county decides, to be where you're at, you know, it's pretty good, you just suffer if you're, you're not, that either way. I really would suggest opening the life insurance up, I think that would be a, a nice thing, I, yes, there's, too often my office is dealing with that claim, but it's, it really is nice, if employer can have a check there, or.
If they're, if the standard's customer service, is talking about, I guess, we can look at the customer service reviews, but so many times, in today's day, customer service number just will be a pass-the-buck number. It is so everybody, you can call somebody, and without, you need to talk to this person, you call that person, they say, we need to talk to this department, call that department, bash down somebody else, after four or five transfers, you get somebody on the line, and says, I don't know, when I'm in, it's worse than ever.
I hear it, I know, and I, let me tell you, mine, nothing's more frustrating than being the advisor, and trying to help somebody, and you can't get ahold of somebody, you can't get to that person, and those are frustrating. We've had a good experience, you know, like you said, this is a new company, our office is huge, and for other tiers, for other clients, and we got good, we got good experience, and, uh, higher retention, I think that says that the customer service is a good employer to keep, that, you know, they can run out of something else, so. We've had really good experience on that, but, the only other thing, the only other thing that you basically could add is voluntary life insurance, if they buy some of their own, we kind of kicked that around before, and I just don't know that they have enough interest in that, Doug, I don't know if you have any thoughts, you normally give out ten people to do the voluntary side, but, I think when we talked before.
He would buy a lot of that.
Yeah, but they could buy more, so if I'm forty-five, I guess, another fifty thousand, I'm usually allowing some based on age, or a next person that's sixty-two, will have a different number based on age, you know, so.
Where's the standard at?
Uh, certainly, um, our contact's out in Minneapolis, they're an A-plus rated company, uh.
Is there life insurance, and everything's for fifty, fifty?
Already, we paid the law.
We paid the life insurance? So, if we were to buy up, if we set twenty-five hundred to standard, we're going to hold our high.
Kind of low, right-hand, we paid, and this father-in-law taught us a little bit about, they've been out for sixty-seven years, and, you know, more than a hundred years of history of employee benefit services, yeah, I'm not sure, I'll find that out, in the past, obviously.
So you're a complete, you're a helpful?
It's a question, I think if you want to save money, put me below this level. I, we screened it, in a month there, it said, my only reservation is you have a long history with Delta. And that, that is, I, I like that, and I like the caps on it. On the flip side, you can buy two years of no increases, and lower premium with these guys. And then the only other second thing that I would say is a, I wouldn't say a reservation, but just a thing to be aware of, is on the vision, is we know the lenses are part of, they're on a premium saving chair. So, you know, my thought is, if you want it, if you look to save a lot of money, and you're going to have very similar benefits, and you had a life insurance, you had four hundred bits, just do that for it, and then worry about fifty years. So.
Put them away, would you?
But we would help communicate this, just like the other stuff, for your people, you know, I think you're believable like that, and that's the one thing we can actually, for sure, we're going to do the group meeting, your policy meeting, we would have, we will have all this included now. We, we were shown October first, because of proposal days, I mean, we're not locked in the, stolen on it, so I mean, if you wanted to push it back, I'm going to put it, if you went all the way back, January, long ago, that, yeah, the, the rate could go up a little bit at that moment, but that's what we're showing on it. You made a question, so.
Are all three of these insurances current, are two of those?
No, no, no.
I knew VSP directly, with VSP, uh, the other ones, I don't know how we got them. Yeah, companion life, that's one for our office, and the Delta is for our office, so those other two are, and I think the companion came from years ago, back when the county had healthcare insurance, with life insurance built into it, and then we continued to change to your health plans, or wasn't the life, so we bought safety policy, so that's where.
That's true.
We're going to save you a little time, maybe.
Oh, yeah.
What was that major change, you made it like two years ago?
We moved from twenty-four months to twelve months.
On vision care?
Yeah. For exams for lenses, for exams for lenses.
That was, I'm not going to talk about it. And like you said, we flipped all that over, those exam premiums, they could be the same, and, you know, and stuff like that, so. A nice thing about the way these benefits are, they're separate enrollments, so, you know, someone doesn't take health, or take single, they, they only need her, you know, or, you know, a lot of them need enrollment, so everybody has to use it, they may look at the vision and say, you've got me for that right now, I'll put my kids on now, or something, I think, they'd be able to, they're all, they're all, so.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep, I appreciate your time, and thanks, guys, for squeezing in.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep, Doug, do you want a folder too?
Yep, I'll take one.
Okay.
I have it all, I think.
Yep, so if there's any questions, reach out, so.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Yep, see ya.
Okay, these three people are here at my request, um, one of the things I want to introduce, always introduce yourselves, you all are aware of yourselves, and I do. I, I want you to keep in the back of your mind one thing, which is, if an employee has the pattern of things that are dangerous, subjecting themselves and others to dangerous things, if the employer isn't intervening on that, then, which would be part of the group account folks, right? Am I saying this right? They can actually be denied a claim either in all their parts, because the employer's allowing that just to be able to continue, so. If my asking them to come here is to illustrate and shore up my campaign to promote safety in our workplace, so, who wants to go through? All right. Now, we did post this, and if they want to talk about it in particular case, they should, they should do it in, like, extensive, before they would deal with this in our, in our.
That's really where the, 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 the slides. So, thanks for having me here, Brad Wilson, I'm the administrator for VSP.com fund, and also, as we mentioned, Dave Backley, running, director for the South Dakota public insurance alliance, and Tracy Uerson from Safety Members. Tracy's connected to, they handle the safety loss control and risk management for both the work comp, and actually, they have a line zone of your insurance coverage. So, we're really going to go pretty kind of high level at this point, for, for the start of the meetings, and talk a little, nothing bit about who we are, and what we do, and what we provide in the county. I shouldn't have like played up there yet, but I'll just start out, so we're created in nineteen, nineteen eighty-seven, because it was a really hard insurance market, and that means, nutshell, is that public entities, not just in South Dakota, but nationwide, had a very difficult time finding affordable coverage, if they can find that coverage at all. So we can save us South Dakota, and local government entities, but we're creating to provide these coverages, in my case, for workers' compensation, with the lines of coverage in front of the side of public insurance limits, to create affordable, unstable, uh, insurance programs to cover your accounting, to protect you. So we've been around this since our thirty-sixth year, and the reason that what we provide is that comprehensive and customized coverages, stable and affordable rates, pure representation of local trustees, or made, made up of local government, or connected officials, and appointed officials, and some employees, we'll show you that in a moment. And it was special benefits that were designed specifically for local governments. We don't just provide a sketch quarter of comp benefits that's required by law, and a great insurance company has to provide. We provide a whole lot more than that, and most of that, that's charged to you, so. So we know what file they want for. And now, you, I should, you know. Okay, it's nutshell. You can skip that, we'll end up working for a nutshell, there you go. And the next slide. All right, so, in, in a nutshell, that's why we're, we're for you, for your, for your benefit, we don't do these coverages for anybody else, we only do health benefits and social benefits. So next slide, specifically, out of that SDA work comp fund, we provide coverage for your work-related injuries to your employees. Five hundred ten workers across the state, from all sixty-six counties, living in county, every county in the state. Cover, uh, mostly in the valleys, and nearly all of the conservation districts. That includes about thirty thousand employees and volunteers across the state, we're providing coverage, and it also includes over eight five hundred volunteer fire and ambulance services, uh, firefighters and ambulance staff, including, right here in the city, color.
Yeah, city, you know what you're saying.
Yes, yeah. So, uh, you can. So, uh, you know, if you take, there's a lot of small, it's three hundred ten of this counties itself, over two hundred forty-nine. Take out Sioux Falls, Rapid Rapids, we cover all of them, that would have a population of five hundred or more, over two. So. Uh, when I talk about pure representation, uh, our manual board trustees, who they all have decisions to hire me and, and, uh, and pass me with, uh, implementing their goals. Uh, three of those are county seats, Chris Jacobson, your executive record, uh, uh, county association, county commissioners association. She is the C E O of our prior to that, you're a bottomless box, I've had that seat before. Fred Rogers, the Davis County Commissioner, and Jim Schmitt, the Michigan County Commissioner. Those are the three county representations on board. We're also endorsed by our county, county commissioners association. So, um, as a group, that explains why we have all sixty-six counties, um, as well as our official benefits. So my staff, next slide, uh, Fred and myself as the administrator. You guys, Naomi Perry Drews, who's a county commissioner, he's a, my Rapid City Road Warrior, he travels around the state doing many of his visits. Kenny Campbell, who's back home, and, uh, Curtis, you've been following up for decades.
One day.
Right?
Yep.
I've, um, first responder, one of course, and B M S, um, experience that can bring us to the table. So specifically to, for, um, county, for your work comp coverage program, you've been with us since nineteen ninety, so that's thirty-two years. I was here a couple of years ago to present thirty-year plaque, um, thanking you for being with us for so long, it's a long history together. We provide, like I said, statutory work comp benefits. We can't come in, you know, like, uh, I tell them, and, uh, you know, let's say, which do you want to buy, who we not want to cover. Work comp is, is determined by, um, benefits are determined by itself through legislation. So it's a little chapter, chapter sixty-two is a work comp chapter that tells us, so we have to provide, uh, what that is, other medical benefits, um, that have lost wages, death benefits and those of retraining, um, as well. So those are no break, if you can't, can't choose to take one and not the other, you get it, it'll be one or the not. Um, statutory coverage means there's no limits, you don't take the money, another limit or two, but everyone who does this has to buy statutory ones and that's what we do. And what that is, that's simply just coverage for worker day injuries, kind of alluded to. Um, there are situations where the compensable, and that's, that's coming out of the work comp chapter, compensable injury. For, for, for paying to pay, the injury has to be compensable, which means a rising out of the course of employment. Now, there's case law and statutes that, uh, if you have reasons for claims not to be covered. Um, one of which I think we've, I've reported to is there's a statute regarding legal misconduct. I mean, this is a lawyer who's saying you can use this, if you don't, if they don't use it, it's part of the policy. If, uh, if the claim could, could be, um, depending on circumstances, be not compensable. So, um, case by case, I'm not going to get the weeds about that, but he's right, there are, there are situations that are rip off rules and it could possibly not be compensable pay. And, uh, the best thing is next year, we're going to have a rate increase. So you don't hear that, you're watching that, you go, you don't get my ears, we don't have rate increases for us. We actually, last three years, we decreased our rates, so rates are down ten percent, no rate, um, increases, uh, this year. Um, and right now, we're paying as much as we paid back about two thousand for your, your work compensation coverage. So a little bit of review, the things, uh, things to, to pay note of, uh, on your renewal. Uh, we give you a twenty-five percent renewal credit, that puts together the estimated renewal for twenty twenty-three. The act of the office being put in, uh, creates a twenty-five percent credit each year. Retired equity, do nothing more than just keep on being a member of ours, it just, it just increases a little bit, uh, uh, each year. The loss control credit, which I see moving into the, um, on the agenda, that's a nine percent credit and safety benefits. Tracy's group, their loss control debts come out, they do a walk through a lot of the buildings and, uh, courthouse, and they have recommendations. They're called the recommendations. When those are completed and recharged, generates nine percent loss control credit for the next three years. They were out here in May of twenty twenty-one, um, maybe credit last year because sometimes it just takes a little while to get paid done. And it's not been done, so as of right now, you'll get that back by September paper, which is what we're due, what we're due back for the renewal. Um, there'll be four thousand dollars on the table for loss control credit, that's four thousand per year.
So what do we need to do?
Well, there's, there's recommendations that have been, been issued and, I, I don't know who, who takes the lead to take care of it here, we can sure we can comply with it. But there's two pages that just need to be filled out, and I guess we completed this, Tracy's financial, so we need a little bit more to this. But basically, it's done, or here's our plan to do it. I hardly need to have that.
Is that their conclusion?
I think we usually, they will not come, we, they'll handle it, I can talk this time.
And then goes up to the department.
Yeah.
How could we possibly provide that at a point there?
Um, well, I think they'll provide it at it, that way. And the thing is, is that if they aren't complete, you just have a target, you can say, it does take longer than the next couple of weeks. I think our planners have done a general close to work on this, we've got a plan to accomplish, um, but, uh, recommendations.
How long have we got, how long? Quarter time?
Even May of last year. Yep, only half, over a year. So that's, and you've always gotten that credit, I'm just bringing it up because this is the first time in, since we've been writing for two hundred, which I haven't seen yet. So that's, that's a way to save some more money, I can use that into a saving program. So the next, so the annual contribution, that's how much you're covering this possibility. You can reduce that by a four thousand dollars, right, by, you know, that's another, I can have a. Now, the fund modifier is really going to, that's the one thing you, of the safety control. You control safety, you control worker day injuries. That modifier is a reflection, how many claims do you have and how much will cost you? That's only down ten percent over last year, over the season twenty twenty-two, so your renewal is going down ten percent based on that. Because you have one year with higher claims, it's one, a doctor's, or it's going to replace five, twenty, and twenty, you have a better year of, uh, of claims. So it's formula, it's very complicated, but that's the simplest way to explain how many claims you have, how much it'll cost you. And so right now, you're, you're, uh, going down from one point two to one point zero eight. And so that's claims you have, you know, that modifier is down, so, and that's what, you know, it's just a board claims you have, the board of cover probably costs you, so.
Sorry, can you describe the first grant, you have the real credit, that's just something you need.
It's easy. But you're saying our annual, like a notebook test, our annual contribution, that's net. Your annual book, that's what people write a check for on January first, or it's a check.
We do too. So it's a part of the total contribution, it's actually forty twelve plus sixteen, I mean, that twelve is a rate?
Uh, no, it's forty-four thousand, that's, that's that check that will be ready for your coverage. If you go down to about forty, you can get that loss control credit, so.
But you're saying, if you're, if you're taking all the credits out, our actual treatment or whatever.
Well, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. Before the, before the credits, it would be sixty-three, sixty, I think it was about sixty-five thousand dollars. So, yeah, we want you to get those, and we want you to get that loss control credit. We're not, there's no profits, we're not profit, there's no profits to be made in a commission. We want you to get the best deal, because the rates are down and we're, and we're providing more services, so. This really, this is about as deep as I can go, but we do go into the next session, I have more details into specific, into specific claims and kind of what is, things that how they occurred, where they occurred, and give you a little bit of idea where that one point zero eight comes from, so.
Where's that stack up, you say, right?
Yeah, I think that's part. I'll just say overall, the one point zero eight, our group's a whole lot of point nine. But one is, and I would say one is average, one is not bad, it's not good. That's, you're at a pure one, it's just pure, pure right on time, so, we look at it. And now, and you've got a lot lower in the past, I'll say, or about ten, twelve years ago, that, that fund modifier ticked up over one until we had it gone back down. Just kind of keeping, in, it's happening.
It's most part exposure, items, and hardware.
Yes.
Not just your numbers, but situations.
Yeah, and I, and I can break that down, I had it all written down, but you would, we should further discuss it. But I just get, it's happened to some of you.
Sure.
I probably have a lot of things. So, I have a teaser, if that's the one. So one last slide, I just want to point out, this is just an example, I can take up ten more minutes of your time, talk about all our initial campaigns, or how we list one. Uh, which shares here, we have a first responder assistance program, uh, because mental injuries, PTSD are not covered from South Dakota. Well, we have covered it with many places in the United States. But what we do is we're operating as we roll this out, whole statewide in twenty twenty-one and so. It's a first responder assistance program, it makes three intensive counseling sessions, and we coordinate, curriculum, it's just the three things, if you want to have, you know, um, uh, a tragic accident, where, you know, the first responders in the area, the sheriff's department, um, emergency management, you, you know, they may know what those are, I don't know what those people's are, but they're, you know, bringing together the counselors and therapists to kind of, you know, work through the health situation. So that's free charge, you have to ready to sign up for, it's completely confidential, there's nothing cheating to do yet, and we've got people that show, um, employees will be doing this. So it's a top number. I'm going to wrap it up right there, unless there's any questions about what I've talked about so far.
Is anybody from this, uh?
Yeah.
I will leave that session.
Yeah. Dave, I would put public, it's like, just to get a couple of ways, there's, uh, there's Dave and Tracy talking about.
I'll do a quick public presentation, we'll get to the, if you so elect, you can get, you know, the second session. Dave Pikeley, I'm with South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance, so we do, unlike, uh, the work comp pool, we do liability and rapid coverage. And I've been a member of our crew since nineteen eighty-eight, we began eighteen eighty-seven, so thank you for your membership in our crew. We have about eighty-five percent of the local governments, uh, I am a government employee, I'm on state retirement, no commission involved. We believe in our great services that we provide to the local governments and all of us are, uh, long time public service. I was a Stanley County State Attorney back in the late nineties here, so if you'll forgive me, as I come into this courthouse, I get a little shaky because I have so many hard hearings here that, we're not pleasant, so this is a much better, much better routine today. But anyways, you can keep your next one. So just to give you an idea, like, like the work comp pool, we are governed by our members, up by and for our members. Uh, we are only allowed public entities, we only cover public entities. Every one of our board members, eleven in number, are all using public and public, uh, services. So we have four permanent county seats. Uh, my immediate boss is the Brown County Commissioner, Mike Reese, so he calls me every Friday. And he's helping everything that's going on with counties, usually it's everything that's going wrong. So we're very appreciative of what's going on, and as a former county employee myself, I, I certainly understand what you're going through here. Kathy Lyons is our board secretary, she started in counties. Uh, Cindy Brugman is the auditor for County County, and then Chris Jacobson actually serves on our board as well. So our two, uh, pools, we actually share two board members, we both have Devon Taylor, who's the head of municipal league, and then we have Chris Jacobson, so that will be the next one. So your team, and I'm sorry, I'm pitch hitting today, your separate meeting. Becky Brunson is going to be your member services rep, will usually come here, she's brand new, we're happy to have her. She was a twenty-year veteran of the city Wagner, she was the finance officer and also, uh, the, uh, city administrator. And before that, she actually worked in the, uh, uh, in legislative audit, she also worked in a audit in tax, sales tax returns, appearance of the state of South Dakota. So with an accounting degree, she has a wealth of knowledge and all sorts of operations, you can jump on the bat, but she also knows the coverages we have. And then patron Nichols, she's an underwriter for us, and she's achieved that chartered property, you guys are the underwriters, that just means it's the highest standard of proficiency in the underwriting profession, so. Briefly, the coverages we have with us are general liability that the police use public officials. Uh, and also auto liability, we have auto damage, that's kind of like, uh, comprehensive in property coverage on your vehicle, just like your personal one. Law enforcement, obviously, we have your properties. So T I B refers to total insured value in our industry. That means what's the total value of all your properties to get that county owns. So that's just under nine million dollars, which you have covered by our program. Uh, enhanced crime is something that we brought in in twenty sixteen, and that is kind of, uh, just a, a greater way to cover bonding of any public people. So the state legislature allows where you have that type of coverage, you don't need to buy those separate bonds for each employee. So like when I was both a state attorney, I was also a city attorney here, and also for Sioux Falls. Like fortunately, every place that I was the lawyer for was a member of our tool, so I never had to buy a separate bond, so it's a really nice benefit to have. And then equipment breakdown is, is as it says, so your premium is what you call it, most places we call it your contribution, that's seventy-six thousand dollars a year for all of that. Doug, you can do the next slide. So what our board does is we, uh, they don't, they designate all the interest income that we make every year on the total pool assets. And we want to give that back as credits to our members, our public members. And each year, uh, looking at the types of credits you have available, loss control is, as you, this is similar to the work comp pool. As the guy comes out, they do a loss control survey after three years, there's some suggestions we can make to you, does the county probably vote, or do they have a lot? And I get, I've been a city attorney for a lot, I've been Stanley County State Attorney, and I understand it's a little tough to do these things right away. I get it, as long as you can show you have a plan in place, you have a capital group of plans, you have some type of forward progress, moving towards rectifying that, you're going to get that credit. Okay, so it's not something like, you have to have it completely done, built, or a safeguard or whatever right away, you just have to have a plan in place, and you're going to get it. And again, like the work comp pool, we're very generous, and we want to give that out. We don't have commissions to worry about, we don't have profits to make, we want to give it all back to the membership. The other ones are loss ratio, and the loss ratio in our pool is contribution versus the amount paid back. So if you are below sixty percent, you get that loss. And Tracy, she'll talk a little bit about what they do as far as ways they can help you get that credit. Uh, renewal credit is simply turning in the paperwork on time, and I believe you guys, we have October thirty-one, so Doug, Doug has that paperwork. As long as he gets it in by then, you get, I think, six hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we also have law enforcement credit, and what law enforcement credit is for is if your sheriff agrees to adopt these twelve model law enforcement policies and train your, your, uh, officers on that, you get that, that credit every year. And then we also have, uh, first time, the cyber credit, cybers are everything related to information technology. And so the county is out of hold for thirty-five hundred dollars on cyber credit this year. And what that is, is simply, uh, sign up for, Dakota State University has a free cyber security assessment that they do for local governments. Sign up for it, you don't have to have it completed within this calendar year, just sign up for it, that's tier one. Tier two is you designate a cyber representative for the county, anybody can do it, whether it's your IT vendor, your in-house IT person, if you're lucky enough to have one. Uh, it could be anybody, we have hundreds of hours of free trainings that this person will do, but just know the language enough to be able to be in point of contact. We have, uh, two cyber incident response plans that we have on our website, you adopt one of those, you go through it, so you're ready, issue now, it's a cyber attack, computer attack, your whole team knows what to do. And then finally, uh, the third tier of that cyber credit is a little refund, a little bit of any purchase you made, and everybody's fine, some of you are, or software, what happened, so. That thirty-five hundred dollars will be very, what, when you get, you have to hand it to them, yes.
So I was going to ask for the cyber side, I noticed the, the slide back, the license is different, things with cyber or law of them. Do you have a cyber contribution in limit, something?
That's included in liability, I forgot.
Or have the general liability?
Yeah, that's all part of the liability income, yeah.
What is forward security, you have that?
Sorry, what?
What is forward security, you have that issue at all?
In terms of the liability or potential liability? It would be, yes, I mean, that would be part of, I'm not sure what your contract with U J S specifically says about that, in terms of providing that versus you guys. It was a couple of decades to research this. I don't know. Yeah, I can't recall off the top of my head, I can get back to you on that, but. Right, right.
We're all certified in security.
Yes, it'd be your chef's job. Yeah. No, but our, the liability portion, if it is your officers doing, uh, something for the county, on behalf of for the county, at your county courthouse, that will be covered under our liability.
Even if it's a property, we don't, we don't.
If you are given control of it, even if you don't own it, if your deputies are operating there, probably our liability coverage is covered. there, probably our liability coverage is covered. If it's in the line of duty, which they're doing, right? If they're in line of duty, yes, so it's a very broad coverage. Yep, great question. So, already signed up for the D S U?
You have confirmation, you're not.
Yeah, so those, are those, like, the loss ratio, when, are those the program, are they all, are none, stuff, you mentioned tiers on the cyber? The cyber's tier, I'm sorry, and then, but the rest of them are just all along them, yeah, so, that'd be, give me two more slides up.
Do you want?
Oh, okay, um, one of the practices, the government practice hotline, if you don't know about them, we have a panel of council attorneys all throughout South Dakota, they're experts in local government legal issues, uh, I have people calling me all the time, I'm happy to listen, but I'm not actively practicing anymore, and I usually tell them, you need to talk to someone who's still actively practicing, and we're unfortunately covered, but I don't practice, you know, but, and they, you usually want to talk to them instead, but anyways, it's a very helpful thing, and it's free, part of your membership, uh, in our pool, so, they just, uh, that's all it really had for us, uh, just as a matter of local notes, uh, one of our earliest general consultants for our pool is Neil Holberg, so, uh, so, a lot of our framework and how we get run, Neil helps us, so, thank you for having us, and happy to, 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 thank you.
Would it be a second, right, staff, here we'll sit a couple of times, and we climb around, um, as, as David said, my name is Tracy Iverson, I'm one of the owners of Safety Benefits, we already talked about Doug Kirkpatrick, he was a prior owner, and Todd Iverson worked with him for fourteen years, and then Todd and I were just the business, so, we're still in touch with Doug, but Doug is, uh, doing work with Brad right now, and, and with Safety Benefits, so our role in this whole thing is that Safety Benefits provide, uh, both safety and risk management services on behalf of these two pools, and that is something that is included in your premiums, you do not pay additional cost for Safety Benefits to provide those services to you, so it's very different than those traditional insurance companies, in the next one, so, in a nutshell, and I could go on all the way above you and have, but want, uh, SBI services, the typical thing your, when the D S is doing, or coming up to your place and doing, are loss control surveys, once every three years, Safety Benefit, at least once every three years, Safety Benefits is going to come onsite, and work with folks like Doug, with the sheriff, with, uh, the highway superintendent, to do what we call a loss control survey, and lots of more looking at your practices, at your programs, at your procedures, at your fire extinguishers, all those ways where we could see somebody potentially get injured, or all of those ways in which we might be able to better manage risks, so there's not a liability claim, that's once every three years, now, as far as property valuations, we do those on behalf of the S B K A, once every four years, so, okay, we come out, that's not about an in-depth loss control one, that's to take a look at property and about the right proper values, now, the in-person training, that's something we do a great deal out of, uh, hundreds and hundreds of hours of that each year, one of the biggest trainings is in chat, mind, safety and health, a lot of our highway departments attend that, because it's a full day of in-depth training that is free of charge, if you've got around the state, lots of other training, like defensive driving, uh, maybe, uh, CPR, safe lifting, back safety, uh, we have, uh, probably hundreds of titles or more, that we are willing to come out and, uh, provide for our members, in addition on that in-person training, uh, we also have, uh, some law enforcement things that we will do, some law enforcement training, so, there's a lot in there, and if folks don't always realize how much we have available, the only need to ask, we'll certainly promote it, but the only need to ask, hey, do you do anything on this, or we'd like a little of this bandwidth for our employees, we'll put something together, and we're, we'll come out. Online training, there are two things that are free, actually, that we offer, there's , uh, online courses, kind of the click along, safety courses, your typical, uh, courses, we also have streaming safety videos available, those are fantastic for safety meetings, you go and you grab the video from online, it comes with a course guide, a course quiz, a fact sheet, it, it's something that allows you to do a great safety meeting on a specific topic, and you even have to come up with anything on here, and it'll all be there for you, those are completely free of charge, and you get signed up for that, or the employees can apply for that through Safety Benefits, the pools pay those fees, so their members can participate, uh, we also have law enforcement training online through the legal and liability risk management institute, so three programs online, you can take advantage of free of charge, David already mentioned the employee practices hotline, employment practices hotline, and the government practices hotline, uh, Safety Benefits manages those, so if you call and you, you get me, or, or one of our staff numbers, we're the ones that are going to listen to what that potential issue might be, as far as employment, uh, when a city or county, I'm sorry, is preparing perhaps to terminate, needs a discipline, they have the question about hiring, maybe about the ADA, we can connect you to a attorney that has been selected by S B K A, that's the main thing, the government practices hotline, uh, things that aren't employment related, okay, safety recognition award, that's something that we provide, because we like to, on behalf of the pools, recognize those locations that do the work, that do heavy lifting, and, um, do particularly like training, and policies, and programs, and, um, keep them for the safety and the risk, and then last, without going too much into what we do, consultation, that means, we'll come to you, if you have questions, we'll attend meetings if you need us to, if somebody has a question, and they're just not sure where to look for what, or where they might find an answer about, uh, the county, they give us a call, if they can benefit with an answer, all comes in questions all the time, and if we can't help you, then we'll get you to somebody else, that will be honest, and we go, all those sort of things, like, free of charge, really quickly on this slide, this is a stat, you might recommend some of the names, Tom, Tracy Iverson, we're the owners, Jeff Landy and Matthew Peterson, our retired, uh, highway patrols, Jeff has a tremendous, uh, background in investigation and training as well, Kelly Iverson is one of our newest hires, he also does the, uh, the field work, like our other folks, and then our office support, Shana and Kerry, you might, uh, talk to them most frequently if they screen calls, with all of those, uh, consultants, we have well-run, the years, uh, experience in the public sector, and then added to that, some military experience of the private sector, stands as well. Um, the culture, that's what I think we're probably going to talk about next, uh, if it's determined, we're going to go into executive session, some of the things I want you to think about in the role is to do a safety culture, or risk management culture, these are the first things we talk about when we're, when we're doing sessions for members, shared values, what does safety mean, what does risk management look like here, leadership involvement, where does the buck stop, who can make those decisions, who can develop a budget for safety and for risk management, who can enforce it and require that it get done, continuous learning, it's always changing, and we always need reminders on the important thing, accountability, it's busy with a new chip, it's to get it done with a new chip, and constant support, all of us all working together, we have a team to help each other get it done, um, it could be some heavy lifting, but we're all here to help you out, that's who I am, and we are all ready, if you have any questions for this session, and I'll, I'll hand it to Doug to direct for executive.
There's none of them, question mark. Do you motion for that?
Please.
Yeah, this, Jim. Hold his favorite eye. Or say inside, motion here.
Excuse me?
Two thirty-eight, thirty-eight.
Okay.